All the April 8, 2021, meeting in the Greenville City Council to order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly, and I'll be moderating tonight's meeting. First, I'd like to call on Councilmember Litchfield for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please bow your heads for a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And I have someone helping you with the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
He didn't waste any time.
He did not. Good, good job. All right, now.
Every speaker tonight should follow their, follow that man's lead.
Yeah, that's right. All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Connolly.
Here.
Mayor Protem Glover.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Bell, he has informed us that he will not be attending tonight. Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Councilmember Litchfield.
Councilmember Litchfield, present.
Okay. Councilmember Meyerhofer.
I'm here.
Mayor Connolly, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Madam Manager, are there any recommended changes?
No changes this evening, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I have a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right, motions been made by Councilmember Daniels, second by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the votes.
Mayor Protem Glover.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels. Oh, you're muted. Uh, can you come back? Oh, there we go, okay. All right. Uh, Councilmember Smiley.
Aye.
Okay, Councilmember Litchfield.
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Okay, Councilmember Meyerhofer.
Aye.
Motion passes, Mayor Connolly, five zero.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to special recognitions. Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I have the honor this evening of recognizing one of our recent retirees. We have Mr. Richard Gay, who is joining us. Mr. Gay, wave your hand, everybody can see you. Let me just tell you a little bit about Mr. Gay. Um, Richard Gay began his career with the city of Greenville in March 1989. He started out as a laborer and received several promotions over the years, including Operator Two, Operator Three, and Grounds Maintenance Technician Three. During his time with the city, Richard performed a variety of duties. In his early years, he worked as a one-man crew in the downtown area and was responsible for litter patrol and landscaping maintenance. He was one of the first employees to begin using a sidewalk sweeper, and he began, and he would report to work at 2:00 AM to sweep the downtown area. He assisted the sanitation division during leaf season. He worked in all four city cemeteries and assisted with grave openings and closings, as well as maintenance. He performed right-of-way maintenance, such as mowing and tree removal. He worked numerous hurricanes, snowstorms, and other weather events, and he was always ready to volunteer. Richard was one of the most dependable, hard-working employees in the Buildings and Grounds Division, and he will be greatly missed. Richard retired at the end of, at the end of March, having served 32 years with the city of Greenville. I would ask the council to join me in thanking Richard for his service to the city and wishing him well on his retirement. So let us give Mr. Gay a hand. Congratulations.
I hope you can sleep in now.
So.
Congratulations, Mr. Gay.
Great, thank you very much.
All right. We'll move on to the public comment period.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers for the public comment period, and I will take a look at the public input mailbox. And we have not received any messages for public comment either.
All right. Let me just read this just for the record. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or are scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing conducted at this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated, with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who register with the city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who had registered have spoken, individuals who did not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. And as you stated, we have no one to speak during the public comment period?
That is correct, Mayor Connolly.
All right, so we'll close the public comment period, and we'll move on to appointments. Madam Clerk?
Okay. First board is the Environmental Advisory Commission. Councilmember Meyerhofer.
I'd like to appoint Dallas Clark, please.
I'll second if it's a requirement.
It is.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Meyerhofer, second by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Okay, Mayor Protem Glover.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley.
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield.
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer.
Aye, of course.
Motion passes, Mayor, five zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Clark.
Next board is the Human Relations Council. Mayor Protem Glover.
I'd like to con, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to continue the Human Relations Council, please.
Okay. Next board is the Pitt Greenville Convention and Visitors Authority.
Continuing that one, please.
Okay. Next is the Recreation and Parks Commission. That's Councilmember Meyerhofer.
Yeah, I'll have to get to work on that. I just realized I had that one, so I will, I will get on that. Thank you.
Okay. And next is the Youth Council. Mayor Protem Glover.
Uh, I'll continue the Youth Council as well.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Mayor Connolly, that concludes tonight's appointments.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to new business, which is the public hearings. This is the policy of the public hearings adopted by the city council, the petitioner or representative of the petitioner, and a leader of those in opposition will each have 10 minutes. Persons following them will have up to three minutes each, with a total for each side of no more than 30 minutes. Additionally, I want to remind those in attendance to extend the courtesy to persons speaking during the public hearing and to the city council during discussions. Comments made by members of the public are to occur only during the public hearing, as allowed by the mayor, in accordance with the adopted policy of the city council. There should be no interruptions of speakers or council members, including expressions of support or disagreements verbally or by applause, as this is distracting and makes discussions difficult. We ask for your cooperation. Thank you. Madam Manager, our first public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. The first public hearing is to consider an ordinance to annex North Green Commercial Park involving 2.57 acres located along the southern right-of-way of South, I'm sorry, of Green Park Drive and 630 feet north of State and House Road. And I'll call on Lee Planner Shontae Gooby for that presentation. Ms. Gooby?
All right, I'm gonna share my screen. Okay, hopefully you can all see it. All right, the property is located in the northwest quadrant of the city. It's specifically located on, adjacent to the sheets on North Memorial Drive, and the city, the current city limits is shown in green. Subject property is shown in red. This property will be located in voting district number one. It's located in the Johnson Mill Run Parker Creek watershed.
Shontae, could you put your cursor, cursor or something on there? I'm not seeing the difference between the red and the green.
Okay. It's this one. I always try to work on that to get the contrast. All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. On, this is the tiered growth map from the Horizons, uh, the Horizons Plan. So the property is located in a primary service area. This is a survey of the property. It is about two and a half acres. Staff anticipates that this will be a overnight truck, a truck station and a diesel station. Estimated tax value is $750,000, and I will be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Gooby?
I just want to let her know I can see the color contrast, just for the record. Good job.
Bragger.
No questions? All right. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers for this item, and I will take a look in the inbox. And we do not have any messages in favor of this item.
Thank you very much. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any speakers registered in opposition to this item. And again, looking at the inbox, I do not see any messages in opposition either.
Thank you. The public hearing is now closed, open for board discussion. No discussion. Pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of the public hearing to submit written comments, and such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the city's web. Submit. Madam Manager, our next item?
Thank you, Mayor Connolly. The next item is to consider a public hearing requested by Third Wave Housing LLC to rezone 12.30 acres located along the south, southwest Greenville Boulevard and adjacent to Summer Green Apartments from RA 20 to R6. I will call on, I misspoke earlier. I will call on Chief Planner, Planner Shontae Gooby for that presentation. Ms. Gooby?
Okay, I'm gonna share my screen again. Oops. Okay, again, this property is located in the southwest quadrant of the city. It's specifically located to the north of southwest Greenville Boulevard. It is adjacent to Summer Green Apartments. Just again, to kind of help orient yourself, you have Star Hill Farms to the northwest. You've got Red Oak Subdivision to the southwest. This is a photograph of the property. So again, you're facing north. Summer Green Apartments would be to your right-hand side. This is a survey of the property. 12.3 acres. The existing land use, the property is currently vacant. Any of the brown you see is multifamily. There is a mobile home park to the east, or to the west of it, rather, that's shown in orange. All of the yellow you see are single-family homes. The property is not impacted by the floodplain or floodway. However, there are jurisdictional wetlands and buffers along the north and to the east property lines. It's located in the Greens Mill Run watershed. If stormwater is required, it will require 25-year detention. This rezoning could generate a net increase of 270 trips per day. Under the current zoning, it could yield 48 single-family homes, and under the requested zoning, it could yield 100 to 110 multifamily units. The future land use and character map recommends office or institutional along the frontage of Greenville Boulevard, transitioning into high-density residential, which is this sort of orange color. And then we have the potential conservation in open space. The, in staff's opinion, the request is in compliance with the Horizons Plan and with the land use and character map, so staff recommends approval. At last month's PMZ meeting, they unanimously voted to recommend approval of the request, and I will be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Gooby? Seeing none, the public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, the first registered speaker that we have tonight for this meeting is Mr. Richard Angino. Mr. Angino, you have 10 minutes to address the mayor and city council.
Hi, thanks very much. Thanks for letting me participate through, through Zoom. But Leah Henry and I have been working on, in this January, have been working on doing additional apartments. We, we did a successful apartment complex up in Rocky Mount, and we're looking for other parcels, and we, the markets for Greenville has been very strong, as we've kind of been looking at the growth of it. And then as we started looking at parcels itself, we found this parcel. It works well with the apartments on the one side and the trailer complex that's on the next other side. So we're looking really forward to it. We've done our market studies related to it, and we have a considerable amount of demand in Greenville for, for the apartments that we're planning to do here. And otherwise, we think that.
I think we may have lost him.
Yeah, I thought it was me at first.
Yeah. You still have it? It looks like he's frozen. Mr. Angino?
There he is.
There, okay.
Oh, sorry about that. I have very bad cellphone service where I am, but that was actually my, my comments related to the property.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Angino? All right, anyone else that would like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward? Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, the next registered speaker that we have tonight is Ms. Leah Henry. Ms. Henry, you have three minutes to address the mayor and city council.
Uh, thank you very much. I won't take up much of your time, because I do think that Richard did a good job in terms of giving an overview of why we're excited about the project. I would like to add that Third Wave Housing has a tremendous track record in developing and operating affordable housing complexes and mixed-income complexes across the state. I've been able to see it firsthand, and that was one of the reasons I was excited to partner with him on this project.
Questions for Ms. Henry?
And, oh, Ms. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Daniels.
And I may have missed it. How many units will there be? Right now, we're looking at 84. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Henry? Thank you very much, Ms. Henry. Anyone else who'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any additional registered speakers for this item in favor, and I will take a look at the public input inbox, and we have not received any messages in favor of the item either.
Thank you. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers in opposition to this item. And again, I will look at the public input inbox, and we have not received any messages in opposition either.
Thank you very much. The public hearing is now closed, open for board discussion. Pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of the public hearing to submit written comments, and such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the city's website for instructions on how to submit comments. Madam Manager, our next public hearing?
Uh, Mayor, the next public hearing is to consider an ordinance requested by the Planning and Development Services Department to amend Title IX, Chapter Four of the city code to make miscellaneous changes to the zoning ordinance. Again, I will ask Ms. Gooby for that presentation.
Well, let me see if I can get it to change slides. There we go. First of all, this, this packet actually has a lot of pages to it, but when you get right down to it, this text amendment has three parts to it, and they're fairly simple to understand. The first one, which takes up the bulk of the information we've sent to you, is to move all quasi-judicial hearings to the Board of Adjustment. As you know, you guys got a little bit of practice in what is a quasi-judicial hearing a couple of months ago with your Carolina Crofts hearing, and you recognize that there's a big difference between what would be a legislative hearing, which is what you're doing tonight, and a quasi-judicial hearing, which is what you did that night with Carolina Crofts. Our Planning and Zoning Commission has one item that they handle in this same way, which is land use intensities, or you'll hear us call it a LUI, L-U-I, essentially, and those are the four-bedroom complexes. So what staff has brought to you tonight is to take these two items, which are the LUIs and the master plan communities, and have those handled by Board of Adjustment, who again handles all of their matters in a quasi-judicial setting. And then the second request is to add some additional districts to the digital broadcast studio. I guess about a year ago, we brought this for you. We actually renamed it what used to be a very archaic recording studio. We kind of modernized it and renamed it a digital broadcast studio. And then what, what this amendment is doing is going to allow it as a permitted use in our four industrial districts. And so again, that will be a permitted use. This is just a little snapshot of the table of uses, and you'll see where I've just added in those Ps in red for this amendment. And then the last one is just a clarifier within our multifamily ordinance, and this is for the setback for principal structures. And so there are actually two different setbacks. There is one when you do traditional multifamily, such as apartments, that has a 25-foot setback. And then there is a different setback when you are doing multifamily, but it is in looks single-family or duplex units, and that tends to confuse people a lot. But in the end, this is just a clarifier in our ordinance as we're dealing with different professionals and reviewing site plans. And with that, I will be happy to answer any questions for you.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Gooby? All right, seeing none, the public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers in favor of this item, and I will take a look at the public input inbox, and we do not have any messages in favor of this item either.
All right, thank you very much. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers in opposition to this item, and again, looking at that public input inbox, we have not received any messages in opposition either.
Thank you very much. Public hearing is now closed, open for board discussion. Seeing none. Pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of this public hearing to submit written comments. Such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the city's website for instructions on how to submit comments. Madam Manager, our final public hearing of the night?
Thank you, Mayor. The final public hearing of the night is to consider the acceptance of a building reuse grant and a One North Carolina grant for HC Composites, doing business as WorldCat. And I will share my screen. Okay, we're good?
We're good.
Okay, great. Whoops, and let me go to the beginning. So this is to consider two grants from the state of North Carolina. Just a little bit about WorldCat. WorldCat is a builder of offshore catamarans. They are interested in building a facility in Greenville where they will build custom catamarans, offshore catamarans. Some of this work is currently being performed in Tampa with contract employees. WorldCat will anticipate hiring about 60 employees over the next several months with an additional 40 employees in the new year. Their annual average weighted salary is about $42,000, and the positions will include leadership, engineering, and skilled labor. The, WorldCat has been awarded a building reuse grant from the state of North Carolina, $500,000. There is a local match of 5%, and that will be covered by Greenville Utilities Commission. The city, however, will accept the grant and serve as a pass-through, and that is the reason that we're holding this public hearing this evening for, for WorldCat. There is a second grant. WorldCat is also the recipient of a One North Carolina grant, which is about $180,000 for equipment and utility expansion. Our, our job creation grant, which has previously been approved, will serve as a match for that grant, and the city will also act as a pass-through for the One North Carolina grant. And so we would ask that the city council hold this public hearing for this economic incentive grants and authorize the mayor and the staff to execute the agreement. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very, very much. Any questions for Ms. Wall? Seeing none, the public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers in favor of this item, and I am looking in the inbox, and we have not received any messages in favor of this item either.
Thank you very much. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers in opposition to this item, and again, looking in the inbox, we have not received any messages in opposition either.
Thank you. Public hearing is now closed, open for a board discussion. Seeing none. Pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of the public hearing to submit written comments, and such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the city's website for instructions on how to submit comments. And as a reminder, the council intends to recess the meeting tonight and reconvene on Monday, is that the 12th? Is that right? Monday, April 12th at 6:00 PM to vote on the four public hearings that were heard at this meeting. All right, move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had two quick items to share with council. The first one is, I wanted to give a shout-out to Denisea Harris. Denisea is our financial services manager, and she was recently appointed to serve on the Governor's Advisory Council on historically underutilized businesses by Governor Roy Cooper. And I just wanted to recognize Denisea does great work for us, and now she'll, she'll be able to share her talents with the state, and we're pleased to, to see that Denisea take this position. The second item I wanted to do is I want to ask Gary Fenton to turn on his camera. There we go. So tomorrow's a big day for Gary. Tomorrow is Gary's last full-time day with the city of Greenville. Gary will be retiring tomorrow, and I just want to take a moment and just really congratulate Gary on his retirement. Gary has served almost 14 years, over 14 years with the city of Greenville. About, more about 50 or so years in the recreation and parks profession. He serves, served in three different states, and he will leave behind a trail, Sam picked up, a trail of great projects and great work in recreation and parks and serving communities in Virginia, Ohio, and North Carolina. And we're just really pleased that Gary will, will also come back in a, in a few weeks. He'll come back and he'll work with us on Wildwood Park as we continue to do great work at Wildwood Park. But I just couldn't let Gary's last day go by without recognizing Gary, and I would also ask that the council join me in congratulating Gary on his long, distinguished, and exemplary service to Greenville, but really to, to recreation and park systems in, in this country. So congratulations, Gary. So congratulations, Gary.
Thank you, Hannah. Thank you.
Congratulations, Gary.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're not going far, though.
No.
Thank goodness.
Congratulations, Gary.
Thank you.
All right, is that it, Madam Manager? All right, we'll move on to comments from the mayor and the city council. We'll start with, how about Councilmember Daniels this time?
Just want to echo Madam Manager. Congratulations to Ms. Denisha Harris. It really is good to know that everyone gets to benefit the way we do with Ms. Harris. And congratulations on your retirement or semi-retirement to Mr. Gary Fenton. It has been a pleasure working with you during the time that I've been on the council. Look forward to continue working with you on Wildwood Park, and I pray that you find some downtime and enjoy your retirement.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Daniels. Councilmember, man, threw me for a loop. I was about to say Bell. Councilmember Smiley.
I'll just note that Gary has given a speech a number of times. I've heard it a couple of times, where he talks about how you can count the number of seeds in an apple, but you can't count the number of apples in a seed. Because, you know, you plant the seed, and then there are 10 seeds in an apple, but every one of them you plant it. Who knows how many apples that tree's going to grow and how many more trees will grow as a result of those apples. Gary's planted a lot of seeds in his career, and I know that a lot of them are growing, and not just here. But he's been an incredibly inspirational public service figure for me, and, you know, both personally and professionally in my work on council. And it's a source of inspiration and gratitude, and it's just, it's been extraordinary working with him and the people of Greenville and, as well as the other cities. But Greenville's the one that, you know, is near to my heart. We'll be benefiting from the trees and the apples that Gary has planted for as long as this city is here. So thank you very much, Gary.
Thank you, Councilmember Smiley. Gary, you should feel proud. I think this is the first time I've ever heard Councilmember Smiley say comments at the end of the meeting and to say them for that long, so he must think very highly of you. All right, Councilmember Litchfield.
I also will echo the comments from Madam Manager and Councilmember Smiley about Mr. Gary Fenton. You know, Gary thinks boldly, and it shows in the different parks and recreation facilities that he has worked hard on. And I agree that we will be utilizing and enjoying all the hard work that he has put forth in his time with the city of Greenville.
All right, thank you very much. Mayor Protem, excuse me, Councilmember Meyerhofer.
I'll just say sustain for everything that Councilmember Daniels and Smiley and Litchfield said. How about that? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Meyerhofer. Mayor Protem Glover.
Gary, I have worked with you longer than anyone on this council, and we have had a good relationship, and I really appreciate the things that you have done in the underserved communities and the things that we will enjoy a long time after you're gone. And I just want to say thank you, and you've been easy to work with. We met butt heads a couple of times, but we always end up with some solution. I really, really appreciate you for that, because you are a solution person, and I really appreciate working with you, and I hope that you will enjoy your retirement, and I hope that you're not coming back full-time. I know how you love Parks and Recs, and I know how you love Parks and Recs programs, and I know that you just can't walk away from all the good things that are going to happen, our pool in West Greenville, and all the changes and working with the community. That's one thing that people don't realize, that you have to work with the community a lot, and I just appreciate what you've done in working with the community. And like I said, I know you won't, I know you won't stop working, but please take some time for Gary and your family to enjoy. Don't work every day to the week. Work a few days. Gary, I'll see you around.
Thank you very much. And I'll echo what all the council members have said so far too, Gary. We appreciate everything that you've done. I think it speaks volumes, you know, when a director goes in and is able to nurture and train the person that will take over your position, and we're looking forward to the leadership of Don, because we know that he's going to embody the same traits that you had. And thankfully, he was able to be around such a good director like yourself and pass those traits on. So we appreciate everything that you've done. I'm thankful that you'll be close to us, and you'll continue to be a part of the city and help us grow our park system and help us grow the city and bring more people here and make Greenville a more attractive place. So thank you for all that you've done, and thank you for staying around and staying with us for the long haul and helping us out in the future. And also, congratulations to Ms. Harris on her appointment from the governor as well. We're really excited to be able to display you, and thank you for all that you continue to do for the city of Greenville and bring light to the city of Greenville at the state level now. And with that, I am looking for a motion to recess the April 18, excuse me, the April 8, 2021 meeting of the Greenville City Council to April 12 at 6:00 p.m. to vote on the public hearings that were heard this evening.
I second the mayor's motion.
How about you make the motion?
Okay, I make the mayor's motion.
All right.
I'll second that.
All right, there's been a motion by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. I'll call in the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Protem Glover? You're muted, Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Okay. Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mayor. Five zero.
Thank you very much. We're officially recessed. I'll see everybody at 6:00 p.m. on Monday evening.
Hey, we'll see you. We'll see you. See you Monday, everybody. Weekend.
Good night.